This meeting is hereby called to order and it is in compliance with the notes requirements of the law. Public notice was posted at the Office of the Board of Education and Communicator's and Municipal Park to deal the record and the start a ledger on August 31, 2019. Page 12, join me in the lower floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a good day. Ms. Rosales, present.
Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Mrs. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Mrs. Perez?
Here.
Dr. Saina?
Present.
Mrs. Perez?
Here.
And now I'd like to turn this part over to... Ms. Rosales, that's our...
So, I would like to bring in Dr. Barry Erleksen. Dr. Erleksen is Assistant Commissioner and Chief Performance Officer for the Department of Education. And she's here to talk to us about our district testing results and student learning outcomes from the 2018-19 spring.
Oh, thank you so much. The presentation behind the... Where would it be? That's the part you... Where do you want it? Do you know? Yeah. It's right there. Quiet, please. It's hardly even required, so... Sure. So, again, my name is Barry Erleksen, and I'm happy to take questions of understanding along the way. It's really important to me, sometimes I've discovered that I've given so many presentations that sometimes I can make big leaps in what I say, and I need people behind me. On me, it's no problem to do that. So, tonight I'm going to talk about the results of the statewide assessments that were given to the students last spring. The assessments themselves are now called the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, but they are comparable to the PARC results from years in the past. So, I have to get started. I'm going to talk a little bit first about the results of the Access for Ls assessment. It's part of the VEDA consortium, and VEDA is World Class Instructional Design Assessment. And Access for Ls, because of course, everything in education is an acronym with something underneath it. It's assessing comprehension and communication in English state-to-state for English language learners. So, the VEDA consortium is made up of 41 states. All of the states in the orange work together to produce an assessment that measures students' acquisition of English. The federal policy is that students who come to the districts who are English language learners earn a cent from taking the regular language arts test for the first year that they are in residence. So, this measure, this is not a measure of, say, the English language literacy standards. It is a test of English language acquisition. In the district, about 42% of the students who took this assessment are in the high school. About 38% are in grades 1 to 6, and the 20% remaining is in grades 7 and 8. It's important still to sort of note that, as a hall, since I've been working with these groups, so I will have to beat the analogize a little bit, that only 241 students in the district take this assessment. So, it's a small percentage, obviously. Starting in the early grades, it's about 6% across the early grades of the total takers, right? And about 12% of the participants are in grade 7. And then you can see that it becomes much larger as a percentage of takers in high school. So, what happens is that students come in and they take the test and they get kind of a baseline reading, and then there's a growth goal established for every student given the year, how many years they've been taking the test. So, it's not as if they anticipate that a student will acquire English in one year, and therefore, the student doesn't, they haven't passed the assessment. It's that the student takes the assessment, and the student can either meet or not meet the growth goal that is individualized to each of those students in that year. So, in 2019, about 41% of the Access for Ls participants in district met the growth target that was established for them, and about 51% did not. So, the idea is that a student would... It's very hard to talk about progress over time, because of course, the longer that a student is here, the more likely they're going to meet their target and exit. So, it's one of these kind of subgroups that people will have difficulty showing progress, because as soon as they become proficient, they're no longer in that denominator of counting for proficiency. Okay, so turning to language arts. The NJSLA, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment in Language Arts, has five levels of performance. Levels 4 and 5 are meeting expectations of the grade level and exceeding expectations of the grade level. So, the way that we've talked about it in the past, that's the percent of students who are meeting and exceeding expectations of the grade level. And what that means is there are standards that are established that says if a student is meeting these standards in grade 3, that student is highly likely to meet grade standards in grade 4 and go on to be college and career ready. So, this is a compilation of all English language arts tests given in the district from the beginning of the PARC assessment in 2015, while to NJSLA in 2019. So Dover is the orange line at the top. So, what that means is if you take all of grade 3, all the way up to grade 10, and you count up the number of kids who scored in levels 4 and 5, and you divide that by the number of kids who took the test, in 2015, about 35.5% of the students would have fallen into the levels 4 and 5. That started the PARC. Compare that to the overall in New Jersey, which was about 47%. So, back in 2015, the district was underperforming the state by 1.5 percentage points. And then you can see that New Jersey kind of had this slimmer trajectory. A little bit it's slowing down, you know, it's like 1.3, and this was actually almost 2.5 points or 2.2 points over time. And so, New Jersey is sort of slowing down in its trend line, and Dover's been a little bit more fussy, if you will. You know, the second year, obviously, there was some doubting about taking the test in itself, maybe the answers and how they administer the assessment. And you can see that over time, there's some clear, some closeness, but last year grew to 2.3. So, that's almost... Doing that, 4.3 percentage points of the difference between Dover and the state of New Jersey. Some percent. So, breaking this down, now this is just looking at grades 3, 4, 5, and 6, bringing that together for the three elementary schools, and the purple line is New Jersey. So, New Jersey, you know, again, we peeked a bit, right? And last year, we actually saw some backtracking as a state in our outcomes at the lower levels. And some of the schools followed the trend line pretty nicely, and then we see some bouncing around and some significant gains for East Elementary. Now, I want you to be cautious when looking at percentages, and the schools are probably are testing somewhere between like 70 and 100 students in each grade level. So, you can have relatively few numbers of students, and the percentage points can spike a bit. So, I want us to be cautious when thinking about that. So, that's grades 3 through 6. And this is grade 7 and 8, and this is kind of hard to grab a hold of, because we have two comparison lines in here. The red, which is grade 7 New Jersey, and the purple, which is grade 8 New Jersey, right? And you can see how grade 7 New Jersey, because again, right, we're basically, the state is basically flat from last year to this year, after making some bigger gains. And then also in grade 8, right, the state was like 2.5 percentage points up. You can see that, you know, particularly grade 7, Dover started pretty low, and is now exceeding the state by some really significant percentage points. And grades 9 to 10, you know, high school has been kind of a challenge, if you will, around the administration of tests, in part because the state has changed some of the rules. Again, Dover starts particularly in grade 10, pretty low over here, and you can see how it's made up some significant ground. Still about maybe 4 percentage points. The 10th grade is maybe 4, the state's 10th grade is 58. In grade 9, 61%, or 3% compared to the state's 55.3. So, you know, again, the trends, keeping in mind that New Jersey as a state, we have 100,000 testers in each grade, so we're not going to see, it's going to be a much smoother trajectory. We're not going to see this sort of bouncing around that we might see. We start talking about a couple hundred children. Okay. So, I'm always hesitant to even put slides like this together, okay? So, I want to make sure that before I even say anything, I note that we're talking about each one of the blue charts is about 30 students, right? So, you know, again, one child accounts for about 3 percentage points when you have that kind of small sample. So, this is a comparison of students with disabilities last year, the percent that are meeting or exceeding expectations. So, this would be grade 7 Language Arts, where 23% of students with disabilities met or exceeded expectations compared to the state's 22%. And then, really, truly, like some of the counts here can fluctuate between like 20, right? And so, that, you know, a student could be more than 3 percentage points. So, that's the overall kind of outcomes. And then this is for the economically disadvantaged students. And these are students who are identified under federal rules as economically disadvantaged. The state's definition is a student who qualifies for either free or using price option. So, this again is, these are the students still identified. Dover, and then these are the students who were identified across New Jersey. So, again, some nice trend data, you know, outperforming the state by, you know, up to 30 percentage points in various places, working with a challenging separate publisher. All right, moving on to mathematics. Okay, so mathematics is hard, because when we adopted the PARC assessment, we said that students could take the end-of-course assessments whenever they get to the material. So, makes it harder to talk about Algebra I outcomes in particular, because students, some students are taking that content in grade 8, and other students are taking Math 8. And there's no mandate, of course, for all students to take Algebra in grade 8. It's about finding the right balance between challenging the students and having the supports in place. That said, about 2/3 of the students in Dover take Algebra I in grade 8. Okay, so this is wrapping all of grade 3 to 8 and Algebra I together. Okay, and you can see that the trend in New Jersey is a little bit bouncy, and then there was this kind of, I recall this outlier year in 2017, where the district sort of diminished pretty significantly, and then this kind of bounced back and kind of leveled off in Math outcomes. And when we break this down, these are grades 3 to 6. And you can see again, some of the bounciness around the outcomes. New Jersey is the purple line. You can see that even year 1 as a whole, New Jersey was pretty far down. Certainly, we expect that in the testing parlance, there is something called the freshman fall and the sophomore surge. So, anytime you introduce a new test, you expect to see some growth in the second year as people begin to understand what's on the test and help students do things like prepare for how long they should sit and navigate, in this instance, towards the technology, perhaps for the first time. So, you see that happening with the purple line, and you can see that two of the three schools are now scoring above the state in grades 3 to 6. And then the middle school, now this is helpful if you actually do imagine that you're seeing pretty separate comparisons. The top line, the teal, if you will, is the 8th graders taking Algebra in the middle school. And in the orange line are the 8th graders taking Algebra across the state of New Jersey. So, that's, this is that comparison right there. I, you know, of course, we all like numbers that approach 100%. But I try to encourage school districts to not make that their goal, because if 100% of your students are meeting or exceeding expectations in Algebra, it probably means that you're not casting your net large enough, and that you should be opening the door to challenging more students. So, I'm not, I'd rather counsel you that the identification is going wrong over here. This is probably really one of the outcomes, as students are being challenged. Then, Math 7, the grade 7 in Dover is our blue line, and that's the red line for New Jersey. You can see that you're about 7. Oh, like the scale got really wonky in here. I wanted to have a middle school kind of thing, so this looks smaller, the difference in the prior size. I just want to call that out, but that's about 7 percentage wise. And then in Math 8, Math 8 has been pretty constant, and that is, of course, again, appropriate, because we really would like to make sure that we don't have students who are in Level 5 over here in grade 8. Because those students, if they were exceeding expectations in grade level in Math 8, they probably would have done just fine in the Algebra I test. So, and then of course, you can see that there's about a 7 percentage gap, where Dover is outperforming the state, the map, sorry, actually, the state's outperforming more than we're about 5, about 7 percentage points. So, you need to sort of take these two things together and see the help of Math for middle school. All right, and then again, this is our state of disability, so the same caution, but each one of these blue bars, we're talking, we're between 20 and 30 students. And just kind of some remarkable fanciness group around that to think about. And then, here we are for the economically disadvantaged students. So, again, these are the students who qualify for freeers. My solution to the bar is Dover, the red is New Jersey. And the TAC team, to get her an opportunity to talk about districts next steps.
Thank you very much. So, I don't like the term for the slide next steps. I wish I could have changed it to current steps, because everything listed up here, and that I've given you board reports and things, or things that we've already started as a district. So, looking at our program materials and alignment of these three things, looking at it holistically, it already turned 12, right? The data conversation started in August at our admin retreat. When Dr. Erleksen presented for about 2 and 1/2 hours, I think, to our building principals, giving them resources that she has, that they're able to have conversations now with their staff, with their teachers, about the students sitting in front of them in their classroom. Not looking at whole percentages, but looking at who are the 25 kids, the 23 kids in your classroom, and where did they score, where do we need to work on their skill level? Our commitment to professional development, we need full professional development moving forward. So, if we're going to implement off of bullet number 1 a new program, that means that we believe it's important to do full training for the staff. We're not going to just release a program and say, okay, figure it out, and we're going to come see you in a month. No, we're going to actually train staff how to use the programs. And then on some of the slides of our subgroups, in particular, the special education population, looking at what are the programs running in those classrooms? Because you saw, I'm sure, that their numbers were a little bit more, especially the elementary level, a little bit more of a discrepancy between the state and where our populations in those classrooms were performing. So, I think in particular, that subgroup needs to be looked at. What are the critical materials available for those students and those teachers? So, next steps, yes, but also current steps, we're on our way to achieving all of those things. Thank you.
So, Dr. Erleksen is here. By the way, she is committed to continue working with our leaders, with our staff. We have some of our building principals who have made the use of data. They informed instruction, their goals for the year. So, we should be working most closely in those scenarios. But if you have some questions regarding the presentation of data tonight, we want to give you an opportunity to ask that.
Before I want to ask some questions, I want to thank you very much for the informative presentation. I think that it helps us to understand in my life that, that you clearly indicated you're careful when you're looking at percentages, because if we only have five kids in the group, you know, that's going to skew those percentages. But I think it was really informative for us as board members, and I want to say thank you very much for working with us and my team. And now I would like to open it up to any questions that our board members may have.
Some question, does it make any sense to compare us to other districts that are same? District factor, does it make a difference with any districts in Morris County?
Absolutely. So, I benchmark you guys against the state. The data for all the districts has not yet been released by the Department of Education. So, there's a statute and regulations that requires the district to have this presentation within 60 days of the lifting of the embargo. So, your deadline for that is November 8. So, unfortunately, state has not yet released the data that would allow comparisons to be in your board meeting tonight, but it is something that I think is important. When you do that, it's, you know, it's a fine art to pick the right set of comparisons, because districts, even when they border up next to each other, may have different starting points with different sectors. So, it's something that you should, you know, you can do. You just need to be cautious about choosing the appropriate sister districts to make those kinds of comparisons.
You know, things like the district factor would be more helpful to see if they're doing better than those that have more resources.
So, the district factor groups are complex, because they were built on census data from the U.S. Census, and the census changed after the year 2000, and the department is no longer, State Department of Education in New Jersey is no longer updating the DFG groupings. So, even, so, all of the DFG groupings that are available and the spreadsheets that are, in fact, frozen at the year 2000. So, if you guys have drifted, or if some of your sister districts have drifted away from some of those, you know, either in some housing density, or... Because there are eight different factors from the U.S. Census that used to be collected. Like the percent of female-headed households, all of those things. Since they shifted, the department hasn't figured out how to update that.
Yeah, because it's kind of hard to figure out how, and you're going to do it.
Right, yeah. So, I enjoy the benchmarking, particularly the looking at distance to something like the state over time. Is it getting larger, is it getting narrower, like those kinds of benchmarking activities? Because I think that they honor the starting place. Particularly for schools, looking at trajectory from where they started is often fair. I don't know what way I'm going to go about it.
I have a question about the combination of the data for students with disabilities. Was that just students that weren't educated in Dover? Or do you have data coming from all of our other district students?
So, that includes, that includes all of the students that you are held accountable for? So, that includes your out of district placements?
Mrs. Perez may have a question. What, if anything, if we've gone that deep into the data, explains the difference with the language arts between what, how we are performing at the elementary level as compared to the high school, just right here in intra-district? And if we know that, if we know what that success is at the elementary level, can that be replicated at the high school level?
So, I think, you know, part of the complexity around the high school data is, I would say, a fair amount of mixed messaging that students in high school have received about whether the tests matter and count towards graduation. So, across the state, there's been some difficulties in having students take assessments, the assessment seriously in high school, because there's been so much noise about whether they are or are not graduation tests. So, I would, you know, look, the next step on this would be to look at other measures of student success in the high school, like SATs or AP outcomes, and look at those sorts of trend data to see whether they're showing impacts over time.
And then a second question. The doctor explained that we have 2/3 of our students in 8th grade taking Algebra I. Is that common average throughout the state? Are more of our students taking Algebra I or less in 8th grade?
So, that's a really, that's a really awesome, awesome question. So, across the state, about 30% of the students take Algebra I prior to high school. So, that is typically about 28,000 of them are taking it in grade 8, and another 3,000 of them are taking it in grade 7. And there's like a handful of students who actually take Algebra I in grade 6. So, you're, across the state, your average is dramatically higher in terms of students taking Algebra I in the middle school. Having said that, there are districts where nearly every student takes Algebra I in the middle school. So, those factors, the DFG groupings would be like DFG I and J. You know, nearly all of those kids are taking Algebra I in the middle school.
And then factor for things I and J, you talked about housing and income. So, are the I and J... So are the I and J school districts, these are school districts with what kind of factors?
With very, very limited unemployment, high salaries, an enormous percentage of mothers with post-secondary degrees. Though unemployment density is relatively not high, those kinds of census-based factors.
Yeah, there are observations in some of the data. Once when we talked about the, you brought up about the high school and their, like the George performance field, so had a higher percentage of the elementary school.
Yes.
Double at the high school level and did at the elementary school. And I wondered if that impacted those scores.
So it shouldn't impact the scores and kind of, well, it's an interesting question and I agree that way. So, the students are exempt from taking the assessments. But then the graduation requirement kicks in and they have to at some point, maybe not in grade 10. So, so what I, to sort of fully understand the depth of that, we would need to go into the grade 10 data and see about the students who were actually not grade 10 who took that assessment. So that's a great research question to sort of follow up on.
Or not.
So, who are not. But we are talking about 25, yeah, so we're talking to be a great example.
Hello, so. Hello, thank you. So if you could clarify again a little bit on your recommendation when you were talking about the students who do take Algebra I, right? In the grade thing, right? And that we, we were pretty hot up in 90 percent, right? Is that correct?
A couple of years ago, right?
In 2007?
There were 98% of the students who took it in grade eight, maybe exceeding the standards.
Why would you recommend that we don't focus on that higher, 100%?
So, so part of, kind of, the theory of action around students achieving at high levels is to challenge them with high expectations. So, you set a bar and, you know, push it out in front of students and you challenge them to meet that expectation. And that's kind of the theory of action, if you will, behind higher levels of participation in AP classes, right? The access to those higher expectations in and of themselves can drive student performance to be higher. Now, having said that, there's a fine line because you obviously don't want to set students up for failure either. And particularly around Algebra I, it does set students on a course to say that's finish calculus in high school. But not every child is going to pursue a life where calculus in high school was in need at class, right? So, there's a right balance in terms of challenging students and also allowing them to proceed through the standards as the standards were written on the law. So, the standards anticipate that a student who is taking Math 8 in grade 8 is still going to be on track to be college and career-ready having taken, you know, going through the high school sequence up to, perhaps to pre-calculus. But again, states requirements for diploma end at Algebra 2. So it's not a requirement, but it's, it's an appropriate question, challenge for students. So, if you're at 100%, I think that there are probably students that weren't identified for inclusion in Algebra I in the middle school that likely could have been challenged and included.
You mean who weren't taking Math 8?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions? My question is from the Southland. One of your current steps is, we talk about data conversations. So can you describe how teachers are receiving data now? So that if a teacher's sitting in front of a class of third graders or eighth grade Algebra I or 10th grade, English 2, whatever the case may be, how are they receiving information about how students have done prior, in prior years on the state?
They're receiving it from the building principal as they're holding data meetings in their common planning time. So, for example, at Academy Street, you would have all third grade teachers and we're given the data from Mr. Marion and he's conducting the data conversation with them. I will tell you, two of the principals on their own signed up to take a dotted course from Elizabeth Smart, who is a professor at Harvard Graduate School of Education. She is a data guru. So, they took the DataWise course to help them, along with Dr. Ehrlethson's training, to help them have the conversation. Because not everybody that's a teacher is also a data thinker. And so, it takes a certain lens and a certain perspective. And sometimes, everybody, we need help and have a view of all the data. So, kudos to the two principals that did that. But it would be in those grade-level meetings.
And have all those meetings already happened? So at this point, every teacher in the district is armed with the data that they need to meet their students where they are?
I want to say, I know that they happened at at least two of the schools. I'm not quite sure about the third, but yeah.
And I just want to add one piece that we are currently working toward. And that is to take our data, whether it be the New Jersey assessment data or whether it be the access reader data, and to provide that now in Genesys. So, our technology department is in the process of uploading all of that on a per-student basis so that teachers can click on a student and see the historical testing data that's there that should be able to be referenced and they don't have to, you know, go someplace and page through the voice.
Thank you.
This one, I was going to ask a question because I know, like you said, sometimes when it comes to this content, so as long as they have access to it and they know how to do that to make a better comparison, I think that's, and that's something we're happy to have them access to.
Right, and that's a long conversation, right? So they're not going to take one meeting, look at it, okay, 30 minutes go by and we're done. It's something you have to keep revisiting as the year moves on, so.
I want to thank you very much.
Well, we did find out that Dr. Ehrlethson is using Astros ban, so we.
Wait, I'll check, check. Okay. At this point in the meeting, I'd like to open the meeting to comments from the public regarding agenda items only. We do have two opportunities for the public to speak. One on the agenda items, that's what you receive the agenda when you came. If you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda, I'd like to keep it to three minutes. And I also want to explain something that I explained at the last meeting, that this is really not an opportunity for back-and-forth dialogue. If you ask me a question, if you have an answer, we will try to provide that. If you don't have an answer, please know that we heard you and we will try to get an answer at one of our next meetings. And we don't comment on things such as personnel or student issues. So just as long as you keep that in mind, I'd like to open the floor. And please state your name and your address.
Yes, good evening, Anthony Rosario, 29 Third Street. While the doctor is still here, I'm not sure if she mentioned it, and maybe I missed it. The data seem to be averages and I wanted to see if she can clarify if they were either averages of the whole means modes, or if there was a standard deviation that was extrapolated from the numbers. Because if we are analyzing 100% of the students, there's always going to be outliers in the far bottom and the far top. You're always going to have that 90th percentile probably fitting in the middle of the grouping. And some of those numbers may be skewed by, you know, either genetics or other factors like teacher changing or disciplinary action, hormones. There's a lot of other variables for individuals. So I was curious if there was some clarification as to the depth of the number or if it was just an average.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, I am going to dispense with the formality of just if you would want to answer that question.
So that is the actual percentage of the students who earned the test. So it's not an average of the scale scores or anything like that. So, the numerator in the calculation would be the count of students who got Level 4 or 5. And then denominator in the calculation is the count of kids who took the test.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you could answer that question. Let's leave this with my 410, okay? Anyone else, yes?
Good evening, Sue Shower, 346 West Quinlan Street, Dover. I think the question, my question has sort of been danced around, but more directly, now with Genesys, I know that we will be able to track the student. And, but with this analysis, was mobility a factor at all? Student mobility, students that are here for third grade, but they're not here for fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade? Because I know that's a huge factor here.
Do you want to?
I'd be happy to. So, these are students who took the assessment. There's nothing in there that is specific about mobility. So, in this instance, this, we would call this the total tested perspective. When the district's accountability comes into play, when the State Department makes those Title I determinations, students who were in the building for less than a year will be removed from the calculation entirely.
Okay.
But that's, but right now, they're all in.
But they're all included in this?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Wait a second, stop. I know the game is probably.
The game is over. And I'm so sorry for all of you.
I would, I would celebrate on something.
I believe you liked me until this moment.
Thank you so much.
Yes, so, I'm sorry, I came in late, so I didn't catch the Diane Mars final. I didn't catch the very beginning of your presentation. So am I to understand that the Dover Board of Education is employing after Ehrlethson as a consultant for test data and student achievement?
Yes.
Well, they might have some experience with Dr. Ehrlethson, I'm very pleased to hear that. My other question is for Dr. McGawson. Even the negative connotations of taking the test and kids who opt out. And so, you know, some is spoken, some is unspoken. What kind of message will you be sending to your staff and students and community at large to encourage the taking of the test so that you can properly use this data to track student achievement?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the philosophy that we encourage is to use the data to help inform instruction.
Of course.
And I believe that when educators and parents see that there's value in the data and that the value can help the individual child, then that is the biggest factor in saying, this is a workhorse level. It's when we don't use the data that people have a valid objection. Because if we just leave these things in the folder, if we don't use not only this type of data, but the data that's behind it, the latest data that tells us about children, how they are comparing to the standards that we have set up by grade or by subject level, and how we can then recruit children, how we can differentiate instruction, the different resources that are available to help us do that. When people see value, and I've seen that, you know, then they say, this is worth a while. But we have to, we have to do our part to let that happen. So one of the reasons that Dr. Ehrlethson is here in the district, working with our leaders and working with, really working with groups of teachers, is to demonstrate how that data can be useful. And so, I think that when that happens, everything else takes care of itself. And we don't see a high opt-out. We don't see students who are less invested because they also understand how this can help their own instruction.
So will you be tracking to see who opted out, you know, the percentage last year to this year to see that you're on an upward trend?
Absolutely, that's, that's an important issue to see test takers. And also to try to figure out who among the test takers are serious test takers, as Dr. Ehrlethson mentioned. Not, you know, there are some ways that you can take a look and get a feeling as to whether people have moved through the test or if they're taking it seriously.
One last comment, I think you all know I'm a Mindful Board of Education member and I'm receiving at my board meetings from our administrator that wonderful things are going on between the two teams of administration. So I want to thank you all for that. It's something very positive that we look forward to continuing.
Thank you very much, thanks for speaking. We appreciate it. Look forward to continuing to cooperate.
One's up.
Hi, John Camigliano, 24 Tower, Tanrow, Monville. I just had a question, if you could elaborate when the time comes for the budget and finance section of the agenda, numbers 17 and 18, about the tuition contract with Morris Plains. When the time comes, if you could just kind of explain that, elaborate that. Appreciate that.
That's going to be explained at that point.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're closing for the comments section. And as we have October documents as the assistant. Do I have a motion?
Sorry.
Motion in the second, do I have any comments, corrections, or questions? Here if you'd have time, may I just have a roll call vote? Ms. Rosales, yes, to September 3rd, regular executive. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Melon? Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Verlass?
Yes, twirl, as I believe we amended executive session to September 17th, executive minutes. Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Any communication, Ms. James?
I have a presentation with this side.
Okay, thank you very much. Change the threshold reports, Dr. Sander?
I move that the Board acknowledges receipt of the certi, sorry, certification from the Business Administrator's Board Secretary that no line item count has and has encumbrances and expenditures which exceed the line of appropriation.
So a motion in the second, do I have any questions, comments? There being none, may I just have a roll call vote?
Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Melon?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Verlass?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
And now we have the superintendent's report, Dr. McGawson.
During the month of October, we observed weeks that are dedicated to respect and violence prevention. It appears an appropriate time to provide the board with an update regarding violence, vandalism, and HIV for the period ending June 30th. So, as required, I would like to just reference reports the board has received for report period number two, that is the second half of the last school year. During that time, and I'm just going to take this by school by school, there was a, there was a total of one HIV for Academy Street. For Dover High School, we had 11 incidents of violence. We had five HIV confirmations. We had 103 incidents that led to removal and a total of 13 HIV allegations. At Dover Middle School, we had 13 incidents of violence, one of vandalism, one substance abuse, nine confirmed HIV, five alleged, and 28 incidents leading to removal. At East Dover Elementary School, we had two incidents of violence. We had three HIV confirmations out of three alleged and seven incidents that led to removal. At North Dover Elementary, we had one weapons violation, two HIV confirmations out of two alleged incidents.
alleged incidents. As a total, district, that resulted in twenty-six incidents of violence, one vandalism, one substance use, one weapon violation, twenty HIV confirmations out of twenty-three alleged, and one hundred and thirty-eight incidents that led to removal. So these reports are required to be reported twice during the school year to the School Board. And I will also be asking the Board tonight to authorize the submission of the HIV self-assessment scores for the preceding school year. All of our scores fall within the compliance score range. However, we are going to make significant and focused efforts to promote respect and social and social emotional health in all schools throughout the entire course of the 2019-2020 school year. Most notably, the district has embarked upon the path for its schools to be fully included in the ranks of the New Jersey Schools of Character. I've had the opportunity to observe this month's faculty meeting at Academy Street School, where Ms. Eileen Dackowitz worked with the staff as they began their work in the Character Education Committee process. Ms. Dackowitz is already back with her full leadership team and individually at district schools as we begin this very worthwhile work. Our efforts to continue to progress and build upon existing efforts in the area of bilingual C and bilingual education will continue over the next month, as exemplified through a planned three-day visit by Dr. Rebecca Field. Dr. Field is a national expert in the field of linguistics and sociolinguistics. She's consulted by school districts throughout the United States to assist them in their program offering and in their support systems for students. And she will be with us on October twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and the thirtieth, visiting classes and meeting with stakeholder groups. Included among that will be an invitation to the Board on Tuesday evening at five o'clock and at one o'clock in the committee level meeting, but we can break it up into a half hour and a half an hour so that you can meet with Dr. Field as well as all of the stakeholders. We look forward to both her visit and the recommendations that she subsequently provides, and she will be meeting with the Board to provide her report when that is completed. Our bilingual class sizes are growing, and the district has present plans to split the kindergarten, the first, and the second grade program, as well as the seventh and eighth grade English and MAH bilingual classes. Postings for these positions have been disseminated. We are awaiting the architects' recommendations for some renovated spaces at North Dover and Academy Street to house the elementary classes. And Dr. Ryan Meadows of Seton Hall University will be providing training on November fifth to all staff, that is, our next professional day, in techniques and strategies to support English learners. All teachers will receive a half-day of training from Dr. Meadows. He'll be meeting with the elementary staff half the day and the other half of the day with the secondary school staff. And then, still within this theme, the district is partnering with TCNJ to deploy a graduate program that is designed to provide interested staff in obtaining a bilingual teaching certification and/or an ESL certification. The College of New Jersey courses will be provided right here at Dover High School. We anticipate a spring semester launch. We've done a survey of our staff and received over forty responses of interest so far, so we're looking forward to launching that graduate program here, certainly one that I think will fit our needs and because our staff appears very excited about the prospects. On Saturday, I was pleased to attend the 2019 full fame induction. Twelve inductees were recognized for their lives of honor, service, and excellence. And it was a great example of the influence Dover has in the wider community and how past and present we are all in Dover. And I complete my report.
And if I could just add a comment, I was also able to attend on the cap of the Board, the Hall of Fame, and it was wonderful to see the community members that came from the past. And what was amazing to me was that when we talk about one Dover, we had generations of people who had gone to school in Dover, who have made tremendous contributions to the world at large, and to see a lot of our older members of the community that have really accomplished amazing things. And I said during the Hall of Fame march, I said, you know, they all planted the seeds for us to be where we are today. I mean, we are really an exceptional community. I have to say that, I said this the other day, you know, we've been through some trauma this year in this community, and the way that everyone, everyone, comes together to support each other is something that makes me just so proud to be a member of the community. It was a great, it was just a great breakfast. I had coffee. It's great time.
You seem like you're going ahead and you can't stop. You'll be, have the opportunity to ask about questions about the Superintendent's Report at this time?
Absolutely.
If I may have a floor. I'd like to learn a little more about New Jersey School of Character. What does that mean?
So the New Jersey Schools of Character originated through the Rutgers University. It's built on the eleven standards of character. It is a nationwide group. It's one of the character.org nationally. And essentially, schools that endeavor to be a part of this program embrace these eleven characteristics. And the key piece of it, I have found the key piece that differentiates this from just doing twenty good practices is that it's embedded in all that we do. So one of the first things that we will be doing as a district and as a community is coming together around core values. Core values, and the discussion started this summer, our district Character Education Committee will take that up. They will send out a survey to our students, to our parents, to vote on these elements of character that they feel we can rally around, areas like respect and appreciation. They are designed to have individuals reflect upon their actions and upon curriculum, which is really an important piece. This is not something that is separate and apart or parallel to curriculum, but is embedded in the instruction that we provide. It's embedded in everything that we do. So whether it's co-curricular, whether it's instruction that occurs in the classroom, whether it's relationships that occur at lunch, that all of these pieces of character carry through. There is a heavy emphasis on service learning, and service learning as separate and apart from community activities. You know, the difference being that we learn, we apply our learning, and in applying our learning, we benefit the wider community. And being part of the Schools of Character means that we also belong to a wider network of schools that also commit to the same values and the same practice. So that when you go on the road to become a school of character, a state school of character, hopefully a national school of character, when you submit promising practices that are put at at the national level, you invite other schools to see these practices, and you do the same with your partner districts throughout the state. So it's added, once you achieve a level of recognition, that's really where the work begins. Because then, then you must work not only to sustain, but to build upon that. And your title of a state school of character, for example, lasts only for a period of years. And so you want to constantly revisit and renew, which is within two because your students and your stakeholders change around you. So the great thing is, if we're talking about morning meetings and classroom practices such as that, this is not based on one program, positive behavioral support, responsive classroom. It could be any number of these. It doesn't say to its school, you have to give out something that's working for you and for your school. But how do you incorporate that into this body, and how do you unify that around the district? So it's, I have found it to be a great framework to work around because we're always talking more about practice than we are about program. Good practice of teaching, good practice of character versus a particular program that says, let's implement this kind of stock piece that exists separate and apart from our whole mindset. And all of this, as I said before, is designed to help us all be reflective, all of us, to revisit, to create. And, you know, I think the Board's had a little exposure to Eileen and the School of Character, and, you know, we'll continue. She's been a great proponent of this and someone who's given her life over to character education, so we're happy she's in the district.
And to borrow Ms. McAllo's current steps, next steps term, what, if any, current steps and next steps do we have planned to address some of the items in that HIV report? For example, Tyga Wrap back at middle school, or collaboration with local programs that provide social, emotional learning, or therapy, or counseling, the use of mobile response in the school system?
Yes, we're accessing all of those areas. And those, character education's one piece, and that's kind of like a, maybe a blanket practice across the district. But intensive services for kids, supports for students is critically important, and we know that we need to identify students who require support and provide that. So we've been fortunate that we've had Tyga Wrap, and we've been in deep dialogue with Tyga Wrap and how we can use those services more effectively, integrate them more deeply here at the high school level. We've also held meetings with Family Intervention Services and with other support agencies throughout the community to bring those services into the district for our students. One of the key pieces that we will be working on with all of our schools is the implementation of core teams. So the idea of a core team, a little bit different than an IRS or a RTI, which certainly has its place and its purpose for academic intervention. But core team identifies children who are at risk for a number of factors. They could be at risk health-wise, they could be at risk emotionally, they could be at risk for attendance. And what kinds of interventions can we provide for those students? Number one, that they're on our radar and that we're knowledgeable of their needs. And two, that we have a number of resources that we can pull on. The great piece about our community that we've referenced so many times here is the wide array of services and a wide array of very qualified service providers who are ready, willing, and able to come to the district. And, you know, I'll just use as a quick example, Zofol. So we've been in contact with Zofol now to do regular visits of the medical and dental van to come to the district and to provide ongoing health services. So just looking at this from a fiscal point of view, that's really important. We are also working with Hunger Free New Jersey to, not only, the great piece was this Board of the Board putting in place breakfast for everyone this year, but to take that to the next level, to really develop a summer program for meals next, in the upcoming summer. And currently, we are applying for a grant that will help us provide a dinner program for a number of our students in the district and hopefully grow that. So those are just examples of ways that we can utilize, that we've had great help. You know, SNAP Ed and Zofol have been great on the Hunger Free piece. Family Intervention Services has been great in providing us with resources, as you referenced, mobile response and other types of intervention for students. And we are looking at all of those, you know, to create support for our students, again, who may be at risk, but the key pieces also watching for that and having them on our radar.
And finally, you mentioned the College of New Jersey's spring, hopefully, spring program, and for the teachers that were interested. Is this going to be competitive, or can we welcome those forty teachers into the program?
Well, it's competitive in that you need to be positioned to, for example, for bilingual certification, you have to be able to pass the OBI. So you do need proficiency, your oral proficiency of Spanish, to be able to get bilingual certification. ESL certification, you would not need that. So there is a choice within the program. And of course, people would, once they hear about the information, say, okay, I'm willing to commit the amount of hours that the program provides. But I will show one other piece about the TCNJ program, which is really great. We are coming to this and through this year, using our already embedded tuition reimbursement process, teachers should be able to participate in this in very minimal cost. But next year, TCNJ is including us in their federal grant program, which means that each course would only cost eight hundred dollars for a three-credit graduate course from TCNJ, which is high-quality, really reduced price. So, you know, even the tuition reimbursement process will take care of that, but will also have a much lesser impact on the district. We need bilingual certified ESL teachers in the district. We need to have, we also, I'm sorry to be verbose on this, but we're also forming connections. Mrs. Patraka is working diligently now to form connections with a number of schools so that we can bring particularly bilingual certified candidates to our schools as student teachers and create a, like a term of feeder, system of teachers before teachers graduate here. We get to see their practice, we get to influence their practice, and then we get them right before they graduate. That's the idea, so that we can step more lessons and qualify teachers.
Thank you. Okay. I wasn't going to. I know you were going to say, again, you are minus one. This is a question. Okay.
Thank you. On Friday, Dover High School participated in a Leadership Morris event from the County Chamber of Commerce. The leadership committee that visited the district consisted of ten professionals from various organizations around the county, including the County of Morris Planning and Preservation, Morris County Library, the Homo Solutions Incorporated, Lake Hopac Foundation, Picatinny Arsenal, Morris County Chamber of Commerce, JC P&amp;L, Fulton Bank, and Chusy Dental. During their time in Dover, we were able to discuss the many opportunities that our students have at Dover High School and visit the various academies. Also, we toured the building to see Health Sciences, the new dance studio, and also the new fitness center. I would like to thank Bob Price, Gina Heinemann, and Sean Bullock for helping us organizing this event. On Monday, I visited with Mine Hill and solidified with their administration our first teacher articulation for November. This first meeting will focus on language arts and literacy instruction with a central focus on our programs and materials that are being used between the two districts. The subsequent meeting planned for February will focus on that, programs and materials. And a third meeting planned for April will focus on other aspects, helping our students transition at that time to Dover Middle School. In addition, there was much discussion at my visit about student activities to be planned throughout the year. Student activities that would focus on team-building and forming new friendships will be developed, and I can refer on that at a later date. We recently started a new partnership with Barley Dickinson University to offer a two-year Orton Gillingham certification program. This is an intensive twelve-credit program, which allows teachers to take courses and at the same time with the students that qualify for Orton Gillingham construction. Orton Gillingham is a multi-sensory approach that is used to help students with dyslexia in particular learn how to read. On Friday, we met with Picatinny Arsenal and reviewed our current partnership. Dover Middle School students are participating this week in the pumpkin slang. Through our robotics program at the high school, we also have a partnership with Picatinny. Future expansion of this partnership could include a guest speaker program where an employee at Picatinny partners with the class and comes and speaks to students about how the skills from school help support their work in the real world.
Michael, please run your part.
Thank you very much.
Business administration.
How are you?
Good, good. How are you?
Good. Good evening. This 2018-19 audit still continues. Orders from very early low-costs who will improve, will be returned to the business office in about a week to continue reviewing grants and additional purchase orders from last year. They will also begin to audit the state reporting for transportation and student enrollment, which directly affects our state aid. And usually, it's all concluded by the end of November, so we're hoping for it. In addition, the Department of Treasury, Division of Purchase and Property, will be conducting an audit on all district contracts to ensure compliance with the EEO, AA, equal opportunity. Affirmative Action Regulations. Mr. Anthony Carlos from the state will be reviewing all contracts in excess of our bidding threshold for the time period of January 1st, 2017 to present. This audit will begin on November 12th, 2019. Administration negotiations are in process. The units' certificate and health dental credit information was provided to the units. The next meeting will be on October 29th at 7:00 P. M. The administration building purchase due diligence period continues with the New Jersey Department of Ed checklist items in progress. Last week, the boundary survey as well as environmental survey was completed, and we are awaiting the results. Mr. Gomes, myself, and the architect of E I Associates will be presenting the administration building plan to the planning board at their October 30th meeting for town council. Updates on our other district projects. Academy School group project is 100% complete and final inspections were completed. Also at Academy School, the A C project is 80% complete, and we are waiting on the electrical upgrade to be completed. And hopefully, that will be sometime within the next few months. Dover High School, the bullet project is complete with the exception of the new doors. The contractor is going to deliver them this week and install them after hours. East Dover A C project, Phase One, is 100% complete and all units are currently working. Also at East Dover, the site improvements are 100% complete, and the four square lines were painted last week so that the students can play on them. And they are very happy. East Dover sidewalk is also 100% complete, so the students no longer have to go into the parking lot to gain access to the playground. Also, potential additional classroom space was identified in each school and reviewed with our district architects, E I Associates. Approval was given to begin working on space at both Academy Elementary and North Dover Elementary Schools, and this will provide three additional classrooms.
We did, as the board is aware, review harassment intimidation and voting reports. They are outlined on your agenda according to school and number of report, whether they are confirmed or unconfirmed. Those cases, as required by law, are first discussed in executive session, and then in the next month are voted on to be affirmed. So those will be on next month's agenda for our vote.
Thank you very much. The next is the Board of Education Self-Assessment for Determining Rights Under the Anti-Bullying Rights Act for 2018-19 school year, as presented by the superintendent, and authorizes the superintendent to submit the same to the New Jersey Department of Education. Do I have a motion on that?
Second.
Turn second.
Second.
Second. Okay. Then have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruaas?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
All right. I also have, may I have a motion for the Board approving the annual submission of the law enforcement official memorandum of agreement for the 2019-2020 school year? I do want to know if there were no changes this year to the memorandum of agreement. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. I have a roll call vote.
Ms. Grisales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruaas?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the following out of district reasons in transportation for the 2019-2020 school year for the special needs students of Superwell? So I have a motion, and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Grisales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruaas?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
There are some distinctions, but Ms. Toro will be acting in both capacities as our home assistant liaison and that is our registrar. So it's a person who has the most interaction with parents as they come to report.
And then number 26, I was excited about high school students.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
It's all right.
Just wondering who, where, how.
Um, so she specifically picked Dover. She's not an alumni here, but she did want to come to Dover to learn specifically about school policy. So her internship will start in the classroom just to learn about education from the teacher's perspective, but then we have other events for her to participate in as the year goes on.
This is what I was excited. Do I have a motion in the second half? Roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Dr. Seager?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
And some donations. Ms. Phillips?
Um, I don't have anything to report other than what Ms. Jenner already said about meeting being totally like with you.
Thank you very much. Our curriculum is popular, it looks like this one.
Yes, we met last week. We met and what was really nice was Gina Hardeman who's there who explained the three curriculums that we had all read and was able to explain the process and how she was working really tightly with these science teachers at the middle school and working on the collaboration and how she was teaming them up and explained and was able to answer specific questions we had. So that was really nice. So I think we're really confident in, you know, the curriculum we're putting forth tonight. And then we talked about the literacy consultant and the different things that were happening between the bilingual classes and the CEP model that you had talked about before. And we excited about bilingual certification programs, things like that. So there was a lot of things we covered and it was all just positive news as we're moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion, second.
Ms. Phillips? I make a motion that we approve the following curriculum guides.
Sure.
And just let this define me how. Yes. It may be helpful for the board to hear some of the answers that we received at our curriculum committee regarding this curriculum. For example, it's the 2018 fabulous honors program, however, it's not 2019. And same with the other two curriculums. So if we could just explain a little about that.
We can.
And if we can, we can, but there probably something retroactive.
Yeah, that they were developed and we didn't have them on our objective formal approval. So now we do and they're moving and they're talking about integrating the next gen standards for science in them. And she explained the calculus and seemed to the calculus. We didn't understand that last step. Can't figure out how to get that last step, but I understood this, you know? So it was a very interesting question.
And the second one, it's going to be short, like this. Now roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
We have community relations. Mr. Miller?
Yes. Community relations committee met on October 1st. Some of the items we discussed were recorded on by our superintendent, Mrs. Superintendent. Very happy with our partnership with Mont Hill and all the great things I'm going to be forming from that partnership. Just to add on to the STEM program in Pecatelli, the person that needs it sits four cubes away from me, so it's very exciting. We recently, our first country was on a big cambric with 3,000 scouts that was in the village and the STEM program was represented there with a lot of apparatus from Pecatelli. And so I found out that six of our scouts are in the robotics program. So they had an opportunity to have one-on-one with the STEM director. They talked about engineering in general, very excited. There was one scout that kind of dropped out of the robotics program and now he's going to join. And by the time we were done with that conversation, they all went into the engineering. So very, very exciting for them. He did mention this is Dover's first year in the robotics program.
Yes.
And that, I mean, they provided $10,000 with guidance for the students. They have the mentor that helps them get this. And they mentioned that, you know, if they can get something really, do one aspect of this really well, we can help them get to Detroit. They have a big competition. And so it's very exciting to see that excitement arise for that. Let's see. Oh, the website.
It's gone.
Which, there's a lot of training happening through the website and people getting very excited. There's supposedly a launch on November 15th. I don't have things happen, I got the launch.
One saying there's a launch, the other saying maybe not, so we're shooting for.
Yes.
The 15th.
Yes. And we did discuss mission, vision, board development. We're talking about logistics of how we're going to plan to get community involved in that. I don't know if there's anything document, document, or anything to say additions to that or.
Well, we reached out to Charlene Peterson and also another consultant out from School Board because they typically do this work together. So we have some dates that they have proposed that the board might want to consider. They do feel that, I asked them to look at Saturdays. We had some discussion because we felt that in terms of fighting on community, that they would be available on the weekend and fresh to talk about some topics. So they are suggesting two strategic planning dates, either being November 2nd and 9th or December 7th and 14th. And I don't think those dates have to go together. I think it could be, for example, November 9th and December 7th. But the four dates are November 2nd and 9th, December 7th and the 14th. And maybe you can take a look at your calendars about the word doesn't, wouldn't have to be there for all of that. You might want to be there for the next couple of days. But we, once we establish those dates, we would then fight for communities to come in and allow some Charlene and Matt would start to do the work in terms of eliciting community input towards mission and vision.
The 9th.
And the 9th.
Okay, so let's take.
And the 9th is not a good date. We crossed this teacher convention, so we don't want to make a date that would work. Second, 7th.
And I asked the board members, who have calendars so that we can lock that in because I know that that is something that we all really want to do and we want to be the community to be able to come to those sessions.
Are you excited about some questions?
I wonder, and I'm excited about the website launch. I wonder how much time we need to make sure the community is aware of this date and whether November 2nd is enough time if we choose that date? And maybe it's, it's at least to be serious though.
I think it is. I think it is. You know, we, you know, we'll get the word out tomorrow if the board is comfortable with this. I want to make sure that we presented it at a board meeting, but I think so. And then I also think the other piece can be, look, if you can't make it on the November 2nd, December 7th, you're not missing the game, you know? You can still be a part of it in December 7th. You know, catch people up on the work and I certainly think that, I think it's enough time. And I also know there's, you know, that the board is off the sense of urgency around this, which, you know, I indicated that these type, it was my feeling that the board really wanted this to occur before the holiday break.
And then are you asking for availability right now?
I have a question.
Sure question.
Yeah, I don't, as I said, this doesn't, I have, have to be something that the entire board attends. It's something that obviously that's up to you. It would be a community event. So I guess I was just looking for support of the dates.
Uh, dates separate? From me, they're all separate. I'm double.
Okay.
Four, three.
Okay, so I'm going to cover to our November 2nd and December 7th.
Can they talk about time schedule in the morning?
Uh, I think.
We're going to be in 5:30 in the morning. Um, yeah. I was just home to say we're coming to be at 5:30 in the morning, right after Christmas workout. Um, children ready to go. He's out.
So I put, we were talking about, so probably like a 9 to 12 kind of situation.
If I, yes, it does. Some of our families may work on, some of our families may work on the weekend. So if we are trying to get as much participation, if they hopefully look at one Saturday in the morning and one Saturday in the afternoon or evening.
Yeah, we can do that.
Right. Yeah, no, and we, we, we were just, the question was that, I mean, whether it should be advertised as a special meeting of the board? And I, I think that it should. If.
But does that mean then you have to have a forum with the board there?
Uh, not, not, no, not necessarily. It's a good question. Um, the only reason I suggest that you keep at least considering the option to do it. I've been through this with, in another district last year, which we were seeing through some programs with the board and the public. And if, if a majority of the board members wants to attend this session and participate, then it should be, then it needs to be advertised as a, you know, as a special meeting.
Have enough time, right?
Yes.
Ask them to advertise it.
Be special. And if no action would be taken.
That's correct.
We would announce that and then start the session.
Right, no formal action would be taken, exactly.
Okay. Second and seven.
Great. So I just have one, one more thing. I had a couple of people talk to me about, they really love our team of work in Dover, but they also felt that everyone came together as a one community for the Steve Gollings family. And in particular, you know, Mars Hills recognizing that the family, bringing this for the next year. And also Sparta High School, that they're go orange to support, trying to raise funds to help them. So there's a lot of community outreach and feel like we are among communities. It's a shame that something that hasn't happened to the community, but hopefully.
But I agree, I think it was wonderful and I think Mars Hills and both Mars Hills and Sparta were selling orange t-shirts as part of the ticket package to get into their football games. So they dyed t-shirts orange, you got an orange t-shirt when they're on driven and for $5 and you also got into the game. I think it would be a good idea if we actually, as a board of education, sent a thank you note to, to Sparta and to Mars Hills and expressing, you know, the board's appreciation.
It was all stuff, right? Just, you know, a large donation from elementary school.
Okay, and so the elementary school, I really would like, you know, thank you, notes to go out to all of them, expressing our thanks that they came together to support us.
Junior Knights, what we should football is going at this time.
Okay. So let's make sure that we, if anyone else already want to say this, if anyone out there knows of a group that is trying to support this, please let us know. Thank you for letting us know. Junior Knights are also doing something because I would want something to go out to those communities that did something worth it. It's wonderful to see. Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Okay, we have policies. Ms. Rosales? So the policy committee met on, last I think, September 11th was the last one we met and our next one will be on the 29th of October from 16 to 17.
Sure.
Um.
Wow, policies.
Oh my God, wow, so wonderful. The policy committee recommends for the board to approve policies 3159, 4218, 3218, 9210, 8670, as these constitute a second reading with the first reading happening on September 17th.
Seven.
And roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
I mean, that the board approved the bylaw number 0131 and this constitute the first reading with the second reading to be accomplished at September 19th. Second.
Ms. Phillips? Yes, if we could just learn a little bit more about, just verbally, about this bylaw and policy.
Now, this, this is one that we discussed in our last board meeting. We actually suspended the bylaw at the last meeting so that those policies that are minimal, no substantive changes, but are either being changed just for like a legal reference or, or even some of the policies that we redo without changes, just to make sure that we've looked at it and provide a new date so that we know that those are current, that those would not require two readings. And so that's, that's what this policy references, this policy.
And roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Dr. Seager?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
I am, but I failed because I forgot to look at the property damage report. I don't remember.
Clearly, clearly.
That's something.
I got it.
Shh. There's no property damage. And there, and there are quite a few motions for our, both community groups and our PTAs, both that boys' basketball, please use our facilities. Second. It's great to see all the people using our facilities. I know, I know, as I'm looking through the minds and all my, I can't even think that far. It's wonderful to see. And roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
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 Yes.
Dr. Seager?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
I am, but I failed because I forgot to look at the property damage report. I don't remember.
Clearly, clearly.
That's something.
I got it.
There's no property damage. And there, and there are quite a few motions for our, both community groups and our PTAs, both that boys' basketball, please use our facilities. Second. It's great to see all the people using our facilities. I know, I know, as I'm looking through the minds and all my, I can't even think that far. It's wonderful to see. And roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
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 Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Dr. Seager?
I am, but I failed because I forgot to look at the property damage report. I don't remember.
Clearly, clearly. That's something.
I got it.
There's no property damage. And there, and there are quite a few motions for our, both community groups and our PTAs, both that boys' basketball, please use our facilities. Second. It's great to see all the people using our facilities. I know, I know, as I'm looking through the minds and all my, I can't even think that far. It's wonderful to see. And roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Dr. Seager?
The budget finance building committee met on 9/8. We have nothing additional to report. The elements of our meeting and Dr. Blom's report and Ms. Jenner's report, there's nothing additional to add. I would like to move that the board approves page 1 through 19. I would like to draw your attention to the, again, very generous contributions to the grand gala memorial scholarship. There was a question from the audience about the contact with those Morse, Morse plays for district guys for an out of district placement. And then a lot of our free, our free pay agreements are being finalized as well.
Second.
I think the number eight, I'm driven by the Long High Street property. I'm wondering if there's a point in time where you might be able to plan this for the condition, or it's going to be, because I know it's a little dark. And I just wanted to see what.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. So once we have, we have access.
It's going to be beautiful and stop.
Yeah. We were going to have a board cleanup day. It was going to be Sunday.
It's a fun day.
Yeah. Yes, because we are all awake, ready to go. Something.
So I have a motion, second.
Roll call vote please. Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Dr. Seager?
Yes.
All business?
Well, nothing. We went to the end of the meeting. Oh, yes, we did. We went to hell. It is because it's happened in the past, so now it's all right. But yes, so we swallowed the county meeting, which was very important. We went over a lot of the regulations that you have, the laws that have been in place that you covered at the last board meeting. And they talked about the part testing and regulation requirements. And then we had a presentation by Christopher Perkins from Wharton regarding standard-based assessment, or we, you know, we quote ours instead of grading, making it standard-based and the process that Wharton went through to move this forward. And they're in their first year. They're in their first year. So.
I don't have all the information.
Right, went over the bumps and the, you know, the concerns and whatever, but. It was a very good meeting. It was a very good meeting. On the way, Diana, I think you got that for me because I saw it. They didn't have my name, you weren't there, so.
Okay, you can be me.
So. So it is, they covered a lot of information.
I have a question about that. Have you, do you see like the pros and cons? Is that something that ECL district doing? Is that something that?
That is something that I'm going to answer that right away and say that is so hard and doesn't in the future. Well, because it's, it really is a very different way of looking at a grading system for students. And there are a lot of, you know, there are a lot of misconceptions about what standard-based assessments look like. And parents, and they talked about the difficulties that they had with parents because parents expect to see my student received an A or my student received a B. And the explanation, to kind of put it in a nutshell, was that when a student receives a grade such as A in the week, included in that grade is whether the student has done homework or participated. And so you may have a student who is really not mastering the material, but may get a good grade because of other factors. So it doesn't really identify whether or not the student has really mastered the material. So they moved to this standard-based assessment, which really looks at whether or not they've mastered the materials. And is it a good idea? Is it something that districts will go through in the future? I'm really not sure. I think there's still a lot of information we have to get back. I'm sorry. It's educational for elementary schools, like the K through 3. Well, and one of us, it's not. It's not. I will tell you how I worked in another district where we did do that conversion. It is a mind shift change for parents and for staff. So it's not something where you can just say, okay, market period, we're just standard-based. I mean, it is a lot of conversation, making sure we're all norm, what is a four, what is a three, just to test the scale and choosing that example. But it's definitely a long term. But it does, it does, even the playing field, for the student, among all the different teachers, so you could have in the district, non-third grade teachers and they're all using the same program. So. So it was very interesting and it's something that we can, we can talk about as we, but we have a lot of markets right now. But I think it is, it is something that warrants discussion through things such as strategic planning and where we don't do in the future, this is something we like.
Still, I'm busy.
No business.
When I, it's okay, bring up a couple items before. I'd like to give a quick update on live streaming.
So, um, if there were a way to create this formation where there can be dialogue, I think that would be beneficial.
We might have seats that we should bring in for the purpose of the board meeting, you know, set up and break down.
Is it the new, the live stream, have a large one?
I, it might, there's, there's an area there, um, that might be abusive, um, that's, you know, always wet. So, again, if the board would prefer to wait until we're there, and then, you know, again, this is, just brought up the dialogue.
And my, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I would echo Dr. Seager's, um, comment regarding availability for dialogue. So, for our next meeting, and in future meetings, if they will be in the cafeteria, um, I would certainly appreciate a similar setup, so that we can dialogue as opposed to one long row. And there have been meetings in the cafeteria in the past, and the challenge, uh, one of the challenges in that specific cafeteria is the, uh, the air conditioning sound. But, and I don't know how to address that, I'm sure it'd be something else to consider when figuring out how to make that cafeteria space work for this meeting.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, maybe we try, we're gonna be in the cafeteria, and perhaps try the auditorium in December with the modified format, and then maybe have a discussion at that point about feasibility of moving forward one of those venues and/or waiting until we have that on.
That's a great suggestion, we're gonna kind of shine, right? One of the things we haven't mentioned about, actually, we have microphones. So, those who are not as loud can be heard, right? So, I wonder if that would kind of address.
And that's a big part, that's a big part of.
And I think that having that, you know, trying it and we'll see.
One, one of the, of course, metrics here, Steve, I'm gonna tell you the, the intros, it can sound better than I could, but one of the issues is with the amplification and recording, is an echo. So, you have to have a sound mix, uh, which sounds a lot, but it's really not a lot, it's just that you have to, you know. Yes.
My lawyer.
Just wondering, you know.
Yes, absolutely, no, that, yes, yes.
Yes.
We want to make sure.
So, we are, I don't believe we need a motion for this, and the public can hear this. So, our next meeting will be in the cafeteria, because we will be having some presentations and stuff. I'm sorry, just to clarify, will we have microphones? Because in both of those locations, for the audience to hear us would also happen.
Yes, that's, yes.
And then the meeting after that, we will have in the auditorium. We're talking about our regular monthly pocket meeting. So, the first in the cafeteria, the second in the auditorium. Don't think we would motion, would we be able to have microphones?
Uh, I don't know.
In the cafeteria?
Thank you. Well, I'm saying, little, my fair, I had you.
We can have a microphone, we can have microphones.
Probably for the auditorium, we'd be.
Yeah, yeah, the auditorium will be easy, yeah.
Not to get microphones.
I don't know, I think, I was just gonna say.
Not, I, it's just the time, you know, by.
Or it's hard.
By next one, yeah. I have one other item, it's a smaller item, uh, but I, I think in, in terms of promoting our public participation and making our public feel welcome, uh, and we did speak about this administratively, so we're okay with it. If the board is, would the board have any, um, issues with doing what you've assigned to the chief of the public at the, at the board meeting?
Oh, no.
Uh, we, we feel, you know, like we don't need to have a record of names unless they put on that.
Okay, awesome. I, um, I would, I don't think this is new business, but I wanted to, um, maybe current business. I, I think we skipped in the community relations point C, and I thought that those meetings would be really into highlight.
Go back.
Uh, okay, so, do you want me to hit this week? Yeah, and so, I did mention the week in respect.
That would be safe.
The big violence awareness week, which we celebrate every October, and, uh, provided details and, uh, previously on the week in respect of doing the same for violence prevention. School bus safety is also the week that we choose to do our, so, our school bus safety drills. So, uh, that occurs, and, uh, I did speak, um, you know, with our transportation supervisor, indicated that those, uh, you know, were completed during the, that, that particular week.
Okay, and this plus is, in fact, I have just two quick items, that maybe Dr. Plessis can save me as well on. Uh, the New Jersey K-12 block ban initiative, um, which includes funding for broadband. Um, if, if we could learn a little bit more on that, and how, if we're incorporating that. And also, um, the emotional and social learning task force of the New Jersey Schoolwork Association report came out, um, and I'm wondering how, if at all, our district may incorporate the, uh, report and the recommendations.
Okay, so the first piece, uh, e-rate is something that we, um, approved a third party for tonight. Uh, the majority of school districts in the state use a third party for e-rate. It's a, it's a great resource, but you also need people who, uh, know how to apply it to the formula. Uh, we received an estimate, and it's an estimate or projection, that we are probably in a position to receive somewhere in the area of $80,000 more than we previously have secured from e-rate. Uh, so when you use a third party, you know, you, uh, they, they, uh, take administrative fee as a fraction of, of the funding. Uh, but, uh, we are, as you may know, uh, in dire need of technology infrastructure, in dire need. Uh, so, uh, that additional monies would be devoted to infrastructure, to building our wireless capacity. Uh, and, um, you know, I, I will say, so that you, and, and, uh, again, our new director of technology, I, I don't want to steal any of your thunder when you present the board. Uh, he will be providing both the current state of technology in the district, and also plans for where we move forward. But one of the things that you will hear is that, uh, that, that our network, we should, we really don't have an industrial or commercial network. Um, and so, uh, that, that requires immediate attention, uh, for instructional purposes, so that I can use Google in the classrooms, and that it, it doesn't just spin. Um, and, and also, as we heard tonight, it does have an influence on our state assessment. So, currently, you know, we, we put all our students in the chip, and we, we bring in a bunch of old networks to make that work. Uh, that, that's not a sustainable practice, uh, and we don't, we certainly don't want students who are positioned, uh, to give their best effort on a, uh, assessment, have that compromised because of the technology. So, uh, but, you know, that assessment's one piece. Instruction, I would probably say, is even more important, because we are trying to leverage all these technology tools, uh, that, uh, that are available to us, use this great equipment that we have in the district, uh, but we need the infrastructure. And our switches, uh, and a lot of other things that I don't understand, that you told us about, uh, need, uh, to be updated. And so, that's gonna, uh, certainly, the e-rate will go right into that. And that's what it's designed for, it's designed to, to increase.
So, um, for, and the future, the technology refresh is gonna be very important. I don't know how many years this, this will, will happen, the technology refresh, like five years? Or several, or so, I guess that would be part of the plan.
Yeah, so I, I, uh, and I'm gonna defer to that, and, uh, maybe what we'll do is we'll accelerate that particular presentation. November is the senior ceremony, so it can happen, but if the board would like to hear, and I don't know what we have on the December presentation calendar, but if it's not technology, maybe we.
I bet that would be good, because that also helps us.
Yeah.
Mr. Salas? I just wanted to, I forgot this again, I just wanted to double check and make sure that the E-B, um, asset that we're talking about is for clients, right? So, you would be applying for.
It's, it's, it's e-rate funding, it's not really a grant. It's, uh, it's a particular federal program that's done to promote, uh, the use of technology and skills. And you have a second question, I'm sorry, I, it's.
Okay, Dr. Plessis. Thank you for remembering, the social and emotional learning task force report of the New Jersey Schoolwork Association is out. Um, will we be using that report? And so, how so, and will we be adopting any of those, or implementing any of those recommendations?
I think we need to spend time reviewing it. Um, I haven't had access to it quite yet, so, um, I think if looking at it, we certainly can bring that to our district's character education team, along with our director of guidance, and look at the components that were identified in that report, and see where, where do we lie in what they're recommending. Are we, do we have things in place, or do we need to put things in place and start those conversations?
Okay, now it's the exciting part. It's the second part for public comment, and this is not just on agenda items. If you have something you'd like to share with the board or ask for it, now is your opportunity to do it. Like, it falls into three minutes, and please stand up, state your name.
I'm standing. Now, Diane Mars again. Um, first of all, I didn't sign in, is that? Okay. Um, the strategic planning process, if you could invite us to whether or not we'll send an invitation to my health center representative to be part of that planning day?
What?
Back it up. Excellent, so, my other is just an observation I'd like to share with all of you, is you consider holding immediately the auditorium, and consider the view from the community, where you're elevated on a stage while the rest of us, I mean, participants are down on the floor, and, um, you're kind of set yourself up to, to be elevated from the community.
Actually, the last time we did not, we did not go on the stage.
Oh, okay.
Specifically, stay.
On the floor.
Yeah. We didn't sit, well, I, I.
All right, well, that's better to hear, because that just doesn't make for a nice, absolute exchange. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't have to sign in?
Does anyone else? If there are no further comments, I would like a motion for a term. All of them, they are tried.